Good evening. It is Wednesday, April 25th. It's now 7:00 PM. And welcome to our school committee meeting. We are being broadcast live for future rebroadcast. We can all stand for the pledge. We do not have a student representative tonight, but I did want to make note that this Friday night at the high school from 7:00 to 9:00 is the drama club play that is, was directed by Max Posma for his senior project. It's The Man of the Ocean. So 7:00 to 9:00. Hopefully, some of you can make it to see it. There's nobody here for public comment and communication unless anybody on the board has anything. Okay?
Small audience today, huh?
So we will move right into superintendent's report.
Very good. Thank you. I know that it is game seven, Bruins-Toronto, so we'll go quickly through my presentation so that you can get home to maybe see the second and third periods. I want to begin with a couple of quick recognitions. First, I would like to reach out to acknowledge Dirk Koopman from Koopmans Lumber in Whitemsville for their generous donation of lumber and some products. Much, we've been talking about the security of the high school classrooms. They were gracious enough to donate a number of products that will help us to secure the rooms. I did send them a thank you note. So we thank, we thank the Koopman family. And then also, two of our bus drivers, Kelly Fieri and Cynthia Leduke. The interesting story was that there was a lost wallet. And it turned out that, I believe it was Kelly found it and contacted Cynthia, or Cynthia contacted Kelly. I'm not sure who found it and got it back, but-
I think Cindy found, ended up picking it up.
And, and of course, the upside to that is that the individual who had lost the wallet also had in it her entire month rent amount was in there.
Oh, I did hear about that.
So we, they were able to get it back to, to the individual. So we wanted to recognize both Kelly and Cynthia for their attention to that and certainly made someone breathe a little bit easier when they were able to call them and say that we have your wallet and, and all the money is in there. So we thank them as well. So I wanted to recognize them for, for that.
Good news is always good.
It is good news, yes. Losing, losing a wallet is never, never a positive thing. Then the only thing I had on the superintendent's report was that my, I wanted to present what would be the superintendent's goals. In, in essence, they are for this year as well as for, for next year. As, as we know, we sort of were holding off in deciding where we were going with, with regards to if I was going to stay on or retire and spend time with my wife. And so I'm not, so.
She said no. Season of the year.
So that being the case, we did put together superintendent goals. And actually, these were kind of ready, but because we've been backed up on, on our meetings, we're actually just now getting around to presenting them. So I think you guys all have copies. And for all the people, no, there's nobody in the audience. So for everybody watching on TV, here are my superintendent's goals and-
Have the administrative staff already been presented with these?
Yes. Yep. We, to be honest with you, we actually sort of formulated together. So I'll kind of move through them quickly. So the first one is my professional practice goal. And I won't read the entire thing to you, but the goal is to produce and with the administrative team, a positive school culture and climate in, in, in all of our buildings. So it's a commitment to student learning, a commitment to student growth and student well-being. The goal would be for us to use planned meeting times. As you know, we meet twice a month. They've become, they've been, oh, yep. Thank you very much. You can do that for me. That'd be helpful. That'd be great. There you go. That, we meet twice a month, so we do have opportunity to, to consult. We often meet individually. We are in constant communication with each other. I think that that's one of the strengths of our admin team right now, is that we are willing to sit and communicate. And we think that that will translate into us having a positive impact on our schools as well as our students, that our staff will feel supported and heard. And so that's the commitment is to maintain safe and supportive schools. And that's the first professional practice goal. Again, with the focus being on student success, academic growth, and their well-being. And the way in which we plan to measure that is to do surveys. We'll do data surveys. We can do, we will do surveys on discipline, on attendance, and also get surveys back from students, faculty, and staff as to the climate and the culture of the building. So that's the first professional practice goal, is to develop a positive school culture and climate. And I, and I should preface that by saying that I genuinely and sincerely believe that we do have positive cultures and climates within our buildings right now. And I, and I think that they're getting stronger each day. And I think that the hallmark of that is, is the communication that we're having. So the second professional-
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Thanks. So the surveys, will you be doing a survey this year and then a survey next year? How do you plan to do that?
Right. So we would do surveys at the end of each, at the end of each year-
Okay.
And collect that data, which we, as an admin team, I think we'd done once before or maybe twice before. But this year, we would, this, this would be not just within the admin team, but it would be with students, staff, and faculty. So we would do some surveys to get their feedback on how they feel the culture and the climate of the school is in each of the buildings. Obviously, it'd be a little bit more challenging to do it at the primary school, but we certainly would be able to do it at the elementary, the middle, and the high school, to get their feedback, get staff and feedback. We can get staff feedback at the primary school. And I haven't figured out how they would do a survey with a pre-K kid, but maybe there is a way. I, I don't know. We'll have to figure it out. I think we'll have to explain to them what, what the culture and climate are first, and then they can fill out the survey. I'm not sure how many three-year-olds are proficient in culture and climate. But, so we would hope to do, to just do a general survey that wouldn't be, that would be much like the surveys that we've done right now, the Survey Monkey that we're doing, or Google Docs, I think we're doing right now, a Google survey. We would do the same thing. We would send it out to students by way of email, all the staff members by email, and ask them to complete it. And we would be able to get that information back at the end of the year. Similar to what we do during the evaluation process, we do ask teachers to do, complete surveys on the administrative team. We do ask students to complete surveys on the, on the teachers. So it'd be the same idea, but this would be now just geared towards culture and climate.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. The second one is for the Douglas administrative team, will operate as a collegial and a collaborative and engage in supportive leadership. A real team mentality, if you, if you will. And as I just mentioned, we truly are doing that. And I think that the committee has seen it, and those who have been at, at meetings have seen it, when we've put together our goals for the, for the upcoming next couple of years. We've also done this when we were talking about cuts, also when we were doing reinstatements. All of that has been, you know, truly a collaborative effort. And I, we're strong believers in supporting each other and, and that collaboration. Again, collegial collaboration doesn't mean we have to agree with each other on everything, but we're, you know, we're professional and we're able to engage in those kind of conversations. Again, the primary focus is on what's, what's going on with regards to learning and growth within our schools. We would engage in ongoing professional collaboration. So this would be obviously a year-long goal. It has been something that we've done quite faithfully this year. I would anticipate we would do the same thing again going forward next year. As I mentioned, we do have bi-weekly meetings, but also we do schedule individual meetings. Administrators have no reluctance in reaching out and asking for a private meeting and to discuss things. So that would be the same idea. The whole idea is, is for the, for the, for the administrative team to work as a unit of, of individuals dedicated to the same common vision and mission and, but, but working as a sounding board for each other. In other words, instead of one person making decisions, the final decision would come from me, but we would sit and we would talk about it. And we've been doing that quite a bit. The shared input is valued. We, we always engage in, well, I shouldn't say always. We most often engage in purposeful discussion. We do have some characters in the group, so occasionally we do digress. I'm not sure how many have met Mr. Romano and Mr. Delaney. Together, they are an excellent team, more of a Laurel and Hardy, if you will. But we do engage in a lot of purposeful discussion. And again, the other piece of it is for us to support each other in making decisions and so that they, no one feels like they're on an island unto themselves, that we're all working together. And again, the way in which I would, I would evaluate this, the success of this, would be a direct survey for the administrative team, which we have done in previous years as well. So that would be the second of my professional practice goal. Questions? Am I along? Okay. Student learning goal number one. There was a little bit of a typo, so those who are reading at home, I apologize. But student learning goal number one, again, is, is about the team and me as the leader of the team and us collaborating. But it is to ensure that curriculum instruction and assessments within the classrooms are current. They reflect the state and federal standards, that they are posted in Atlas, Rubicon Atlas, not Atlas Rubicon, it's Rubicon Atlas, that they, teachers are reviewing them, that they are being updated, they are being maintained as current. So one of the things that we have been working on this year and is, we've had, the elementary building has been working on getting their curriculum into the Rubicon, as has the primary school. And the primary school, for the most part, is, is pretty much completed. As you know, the high school had done it a few years back. And the elementary school indicated that they probably need one more session to get theirs done. And the middle school has begun the process, but they're a little, they're, they're going to have a little bit of work to get done before the end of the school year. They may need to carry into the beginning of next year to get their curriculums updated and into Rubicon. The other piece of, of this, of course, is with the NIESC self-study coming in, in October of next year. It is really critical that we have, all of our curriculum is up to date and reflects the standards. And more importantly, is in fact, the taught curriculum. It's one thing to have a curriculum that's on a piece of paper or in a hard drive, but it's another thing to actually have it being implemented within the classroom. And that's the focus that we would take. And so obviously, a piece of this would be the evaluation process and getting into classrooms, but also reviewing on Rubicon where we are with regards to their includes, how inclusive is the, the posting? Does it have curriculum? Does it have the instructional strategies that they're going to use? And how are they going to assess student learning? So those should all be in there. So my guess is that we're well on our way, because I was looking for 50% growth. And in that, we have two buildings that are almost completed. We're certainly well beyond that. And the high school is, the high school is, as I mentioned the last year or so, still has some work to do in selective courses, but for the most part, all departments are pretty much completed. The only department that has a little bit of work to do is the world language department. And the primary reason for that is because it's a completely brand-new department this year. All four members are brand-new. They were not here last year. So therefore, they need to get in and start putting in their curriculum. So that was the student learning goal. Obviously, the belief is that if the curriculum instruction and assessments are appropriate, are practical, are engaging, then student learning should be enhanced there. So that was student learning goal. Then there's a district improvement goal. District improvement goal number one. This is focused on supporting and effectively responding to issues regarding social, emotional concerns with, with regards to students. I did speak last night. Again, we, we continue to see concerns in this area. It is, it's just not easy being a kid any longer. It really is not. And I, and I strongly believe that this is the, the primary culprit, this and, and, and all the social media that's out there. And it, it shows itself, it manifests itself in students just not being comfortable, not feeling connected. So as you know, as, as a committee, we have talked about this now for a number of years. You know that we still do family continuity services for, for counselors coming into the building. You know that we've implemented social thinking. We, we have an advisor-advising program at the high school. The middle school and the elementary school have community meetings. We have provided professional development for our staff in these areas. So we are working very hard on this. You know that I have advocated and will continue to advocate for an adjustment counselor in each building. There is a, an absolute need. And I think, to be honest with you, if we were being really pragmatic, we would be looking for a second school psychologist, because our one school psychologist is just being, it's just, the demands are just, they're, they're intensive. And it's really, it's really hard. And, and the other piece of it is, is supporting our faculty and our staff. Because I'm going to tell you, and I, I shared this at the, at the admin meeting today. I know that there are people, and I know there have been many times when I've gone home and I'm, and I'm so worried about a student and their well-being, and are they safe and are they okay? And, 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 you know, sometimes on a Friday, when things, things always happen on Fridays in a school district, always happen on Fridays. They never happen on a Monday. It's always on a Friday, and it's always around 12:30, 1:00. But that being the case, you don't know, you struggle throughout the course of the weekend to find out, you know, are they okay? And it's really, I gotta be honest, it is, it is very challenging. It's very difficult for staff as well. And they need support. And, and they're starting to find it where they're, they're struggling and so forth. And we will, and we also will continue our, our student support teams, which we've done, and we do in all our buildings, which is if someone has a concern about a student, they can report it to the guidance counselor or to, or to the adjustment counselor in the building, and get a team together to review their academics, their attendance, their behavior, their demeanor. You know, do they feel connected? Are they looking isolated? So we continue to do that as well. Again, we would measure that with, with surveys of the faculty, students, and staff. And again, we would be looking for 50% growth. And I'm, I'm pretty confident that 50% of our students, I think we're, we're pretty much on top of most, all of our students. And, but it is, it, it just continues to get more and more challenging. It really, really, really does. It's, it's, we talk about it all the time.
All the time.
All the time. And there are, there are many instances where in an admin meeting, somebody's phone is going off, and the next thing you know, they're gone. And there's an issue that needs to be addressed. And it, it's with pretty, it's pretty regular. Yeah. It's really, it's really, I mean, things were, back when I went to school, no, it was, it was different. And, and it's always been challenging to be a teenager and a young adult. But now it's, it's different. And, and the ways in which it's different are kind of concerning. And so my second district improvement goal, my final thing for the presentation, is a shared understanding of classroom expectations, which would be linked directly to the evaluation process. So in other words, as an administrative team, and we talked a little bit about this today, with regards to one element of curriculum instruction and assessment, but getting together during the course of the summer to sort of talk about what we believe best practice looks like. You know, what does a good lesson look like? What are we looking for in the structure of a lesson? What are we looking for with regards to student-teacher engagement? What are we looking for for student-to-student engagement? And sort of develop that, that template, share that with our faculty, and then begin the evaluation process with everybody on the same page of what we're really looking for. And then for, the, the goal would be for myself and for the building administrators, and that includes the assistant principals as well, going in and doing walkthroughs, debriefing afterwards. What did you see? What did you see in the area of strength? Did you have any concerns? And discuss them back and forth before they finalize their, their walkthrough. Basically, to make sure that we are all looking and talking the same way. And that's, that's truly what I'm hoping for. So we would share our expectations. We would link them to our evaluation. We would engage in these collaborative walkthroughs. We would record our findings. And then we would obviously engage in discussion, observation. And my sense and my, my goal is that at 70% of the time, that when we go into a walkthrough and when we come out and debrief, that we would be pretty much on the same page on most pieces of curriculum instruction and assessment that we're seeing. And so that would be the, the second district improvement goal. And those are the goals.
Very good. So generally, in the past, we've, you know, the, the goals have been sent out to each of the committee members. And you go through and you rank and you write. But because, you know, the first six months of Kevin's superintendent stint, you know, we were trying to figure it out, you know, is he going to stay? You know, do we want him to stay? Obviously, we do want him to stay. I think we're just going to keep it a little bit less formal. You know, if there is anything next week that you want to share, we'll have time on the agenda to share. Any comments that you might have on this? That way you can go home and kind of sit on it and, you know, put some thought into it. Because some of these goals, you know, as he indicated, like Rubicon Atlas, he's over 50% done. You know, he, he's made some progress. I also have an email with other items that Kevin has completed over, over the years since he's been here. So I'll send that along as well, with your permission.
That'll be for next week.
Yeah, for next week. So-
Thank you very much.
I just, I want to take, thank you for that, by the way.
I think that was, and that was everything that I had on my-
Yeah. I just want to take the, the accounts payable report and put it for one second, put it aside. Because Brett and I went to Dan Hill today. And part of what I heard and learned ties into what Kevin was just saying about the social, emotional piece. And there are a couple of things that I, I'd like to get a little bit more information on. Maybe, Courtney, you already know, the, there's a program at the state level that the state has for breakfast in schools. And whether it's, I think it was called Breakfast in the Class-
It's through the school lunch program.
Yeah. And, but the, the way that they were talking about the funding, I don't know if you caught this, that it, you could get funding for it, for the ovens or, you know, for the, whatever equipment they needed. But it didn't really have to be used. They, they were using that funding for other things within the school that was needed. Did you catch that?
I did and not, no.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean. I mean, we do get all of those. I get all the emails that our food service director gets from both the ESE-
Yep.
Nutrition part of the agency and also USDA.
The breakfast after the bell ones?
Yes, that one.
So this is actually-
So it's not, it's not a-
Breakfast while you're in the classroom. It's, yeah, this is, this is after school starts.
Not before school, it's after the day, the day has begun.
Yep.
Yeah. But they all come under USDA and then DSC nutrition.
Yeah, that was the typical program that-
Yeah, breakfast after the bell. So I wonder though-
But if you have anything, I can double-check and see. If you have anything specific, I can see if it's the same thing I'm thinking that we got the information on.
Okay.
Just make sure, because it, I think it is, but I may, I may not.
I'm going to look into it, because it kind of piqued my interest that they were talking about some of the funds weren't actually being used specifically for the breakfast, but it was being used in other areas. But the, they were, the-
This was like the state, a state senator, right?
It was a, it was a rep or a senator who was saying, you know.
Yeah.
So I want to get a bigger picture, but I want to look into it, in any event. But, you know, there's, there are so many concerns. And, you know, with, when you're sitting at a meeting with a lot of inner-city districts and, or, you know, lower-income districts, Holyoke, Springfield, you know, you're hearing so much about a certain level of poverty and how that affects the kids and, you know, their, their home situation, whether are they going, going home to have a meal? Or are they going home to be loved? Or, you know, that, when they're coming into school in the morning, they're not coming in ready to learn. They're coming in with all this baggage. And it, it concerns me that we have to make decisions on whether we're funding programs or whether we're funding support for these, for our kids that, that are starting off their life with so much to think about. But unfortunately, that, that's the situation we're in. And I'm just curious that, you know, if, if the override does pass, and we've had the conversation, and it's just something to put out there for deeper conversation, what the benefit is to making sure that we have more of those supports, your adjustment counselors in each of the buildings, over making sure that we're bringing in engineering and, you know, it's, it's such a, it's such a difficult conversation, because we need to make sure we're taking care of everyone. But we're not all starting off even.
Right. We, as, as, as a team, we've talked about it. And we're, we're convinced that the two things that we need, that's that off, is, is an adjustment counselor here and an adjustment counselor at one of the other two buildings, so they're not sharing an adjustment counselor. So we, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, that those need to be priorities. And, and as I just said, it might even be a case of, do we need a second psychologist within, within the district? You've got four buildings, two and two, it might be, might be beneficial. But, so I, I agree with you. And it, it's, it's overwhelming. It really is. I don't, and I, and I tried saying that last night in the open session with, with the voters-electmen, because I don't, I, you know, as somebody got up and said, it's been a long time since I've been in school. School's different.
Very different.
School's different.
And I think if you're not involved in it, if you're not a parent and you're not working, and even, even parents, they, they don't really have a good grasp on how things are. It's very difficult having, you know, roughly 23 students, 25 students in front of you. There are some major issues with these poor kids. And they're young, and they're dealing with it. And they're coming to school. And like you said, they're not ready to learn. And it's so hard on teachers, because you want to put out their fires and save them. And, but you're trying to save a lot of them now. It's not a small number of students that have challenges at home. And it's a large number.
It's across, it's across the spectrum. It's across the spectrum. My youngest daughter has worked in Jamaica Plain, Lawrence, and now works in East Harlem. And so she, her conversations and her discussions of her school experience vastly different than, than my wife as a classroom teacher in Bellingham and myself as a classroom teacher now as an administrator. And it's much, like you said, about a Holyoke and a Lawrence and so forth. There's that whole dynamic that we have, but in a modest amount compared to 75% of their kids coming into the building that are on free and reduced lunch. And, and we've had this conversation. A snow day means no school. It also might mean no meal.
Because there aren't eating.
You know, it's, Douglas is in this pocket for everything. You know, where it's-
It's true.
It's kind of like, it just, it's an enigma to me. You know, you can't, you can't get the proper funding, because you don't meet all these different requirements, yet it doesn't mean that we're not having these issues. And so, you know, so what happens if the override doesn't pass? You know, we, you know, there's-
I refuse to think about that at this point.
But, but the reality, though, who wants to think about it?
The reality is that those things will not get addressed.
I don't sign these anymore.
We will have less, less to offer our students, more problems, and, and no way to bail ourselves out. And that's the frightening part.
We'll continue to spiral downward.
Are there any grants or anything through like the, like a department of like mental health or anything like that that-
It's something that we're going to need to look into, because we actually, we talked about that today in our admin meeting. And, and we're beyond social, emotional issues.
We really are.
Now we're being confronted with, in every school district, being confronted with genuine mental health issues. And, and there is no, a huge problem now is that a student is taken for an emergency assessment. They can't get seen, and they'll spend 36, 48 hours sitting in the emergency room, waiting for something to free up before they can get to see somebody and talk with somebody, and perhaps get, get into a place where they might be receive some, some services, because there's so much of this going on.
So while we're completely sidetracked and talking about Dan Hill, so a couple of other things that came up today, with regards to that, but also, also on a broader topic, was the importance for, for school districts to form partnerships in their community, might be with mental health services.
Right.
You know, connecting to whatever our, our local mental health services agencies are in the area. It came up with regards to the programs they're able to offer.
Right.
Doesn't actually have to be regards to a vocational program. You know, they talked about the vocational schools being very good at partnering with businesses around them.
Right.
There's no reason that regularized schools shouldn't be doing the same thing.
Right.
And creating internship opportunities and external learning opportunities and bringing businesses into the school and whatever it might be to, to enhance the, the learning experience for our students. So-
It's interesting, and we- So it's interesting, we had a conversation this morning at admin, again, Brian Delaney has, has made a contact with a company out of Mansfield, Metronics is the name of the company, and they do a lot of medical care equipment and so forth. So there's a lot of STEM opportunity there, and they're looking, they were looking for a partner school. And so we, we are looking to be that partner school. It would be with the middle school and the high school next year. And they've already made arrangements for 40 kids from the middle school to go there for the first field trip, and then to have them come out to the high school, and, and so, beginning of a, of a, of a program, much like you were saying, Brett, that would allow our kids to, and we had done this previously. I mentioned Bob Gosser retired a few years ago, used to do with his biotech class, used to go into Boston University and work with the Boston University Labs, and then they would come out with a mobile lab, and he would have opportunities there. And so, yeah, we, we, we do need to explore that, and so I think, you know, hats off to Brian for, for, well, in full disclosure, his wife works there, so that was the.
That helps.
That was, that was the help.
Whatever works, right?
They were talking about it, and, and, and he, he said, I want, I want a conference with them, and they did, and, and the admin team's 100% behind it.
That's great.
Opportunity, yeah.
Kind of maybe tying it back to what we were talking about, it sounds like it might be a good opportunity to have some goals around that in the future, so that it becomes something that's more institutionalized, and isn't something that comes and goes, it's something that's part of.
Right.
Every school year. It's part of the culture of the school, is forming multiple partnerships in multiple areas, again, whether it be programs, whether it be services, you know, those types of things.
And so one of the things that, that you'll see when, when we get to, I think it's the next meeting, but I'm not sure, the strategic plan, which is a, which is like a four-year plan, three, I actually did, I think, a three-year plan, in that it, it would allow us to cover this year, next year, and the first year of somebody coming in, they wouldn't have to develop a, a huge plan. But in that is STEM, and STEM at all grade levels. And I actually just met with Jess Finlay, and she is writing a grant from the Blackstone Valley Educational Collaborative for STEM as well, and we're hoping that she'll get that, and that would be a program that she would offer in the spring next year at the middle school. As we talked about, in our, in that plan moving forward was to bring STEM integration into all of the buildings, and of course, that requires some staffing, and that requires some supplies and materials, so there is, there is a dollar amount that goes along with it, but if we're going to move the district forward, that, that goes along with what you were saying.
And I, I would just suggest that you could expand it even beyond STEM, unless you consider, like, you know, banking and finance to be as part of STEM, or, you know, but I would try to include some of that with it as well.
So, interestingly, we have, we're down to two finalists for the business position here in the building, and I've asked Mr. Romano in, in, in having these interviews, that he, we were looking for a business instructor that would bring us and allow us to offer not just the entrepreneurship, but the marketing, the marketing one, the marketing two, the finance piece of it. And then, if, if I'm, I think, I might be the only one who remembers this, but seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, we, we were exploring DECA, which is a great opportunity. And there's two or three schools in the, in the area that, that are really active in DECA, and they, they go to different presentations, and then they go to the, to the New England's, then if they qualify, kids go to the, to the, to the Nationals, and it's a, it's a great program that did not get off the ground a few years back, but that was part of the, what I was looking for him to build. Because, and, and then the piece of that we talked about was getting internships and getting kids out into, into businesses in the area where they can get some experience with that.
That's great. There's a lot of good planning going on, and hopefully.
Will require funding.
We'll have some funding to back it up.
Act on it, yeah.
But it's always great to have the plans, though.
Absolutely.
It is, I think, you know.
Absolutely.
You've got to be ready to count on whatever opportunity comes.
And the partnerships don't necessarily cost anything.
I, I, I think that's the key. I think, that was, that was a lot of the point, too, was that they're, they're so important, because, again, there, there might not be a cost with it, or there might be, you know, some, some kind of exchange there, where, you know, there's benefits for both parties, and, and again, it's just, it's just a way of enhancing your programs, you know, and.
It's a great opportunity, and the connectivity, all, all of them going out into the workforce.
That's what it is, yeah.
And they can actually see what their education, the value of it, and how they can apply it.
And there's probably some residual benefits of just being more connected to the community, and how that can lead to other good things, and, you know, it's just overall.
That was one of the things that, that Brian mentioned, was that Metronics was talking about possible summer internship programs for kids.
Yeah.
At that company as well. While we're on that, if I could update you, I was very busy today. If I could update you on a phone call that I received, which was from this Dr. Samuels, as I mentioned, we've been exploring this, this process of trying to join this collaborative, which was what I was trying to explain to that gentleman last night, was that we weren't looking to do this on our own, we were looking to, to partner in. They are still moving forward. They are hoping that we would be that third school district to get in on the, on, on the program. They have, they have confirmations from Northbridge and from Uxbridge. They have reached out to Sutton and to Millbury as well, and they're hoping to draw, draw them into it. So, but I did talk with him again today. He does have some things lined up, firmed, as I mentioned, with UMass, and also with Waukesha Community College, but also, he has firmed up an agreement with Tufts Medical for the veterinarian piece of it. He has asked me to make an appointment with Douglas Orchard, which would be the, the plant piece of it. They would be our connection there. And interestingly, he, the Uxbridge building planning has fallen through, so he is still looking for a building, and he is looking, once, if we can, if, if we can make that commitment, then he's looking to, for me to arrange a meeting with a representative from the selectmen's office in Fincom, as well as with the town administrator, to see if there is an opportunity to develop the grammar school and turn that into the satellite campus. So that's still in the works.
I saw someone's already taken the grammar school for some kind of project. Is that not true anymore?
No, I was, I was made aware.
For 48 years.
Have they fell through?
We, it was not acceptable as a use.
Okay.
So, so that was, that's, that was an update that came through today. He has been very patient, and we've told him that, given our financial concerns, that I didn't want to commit to a program that we would end up having to bail on.
Dropping a year.
Because we just couldn't.
Has he, has he given you a number to be committed, or?
There's a, there's an initial entry number, and then, then it would be, I, I don't know beyond that, so the initial entry number would be $6,900.
And that's exploratory, correct?
Right, that's just exploratory.
Exploratory, yeah.
But it, it does indicate that we, that we're on, in other words, that we, we would, we would sign a contract that we are looking to go forward and explore and be part of the, the collaborative. He needs three schools in order to form a collaborative, to qualify for grants, and so forth.
But then if one of the others, say Millbury does, it has more money.
Right.
He's got his three, and that maybe we can still be part of it, is that correct?
But is it, how can we get that approved? I mean, that just sounds like such a great opportunity. I know that money's tight, but we always find money for people that come approaching us. I don't know why.
Depending on the language and the contract.
It's only entry-level money right now, so just exploratory money. I don't know.
Just to see what the.
What the commitment is.
And what the contract would say, yeah.
Going beyond that.
Right.
But I think that, and, and I, I had this, this conversation with one of the members of the selectmen's, and, and also with, with, I don't think the town, I don't think I talked with the town administrator about it, and he agreed the same thing. But I said to him, I said, that's all well and good, but we need to be able to know that we're going to be able to.
Sustain it.
Get in and stay in.
I would just suggest for $6,900, that's a worthy investment, it ends up being a dry well.
I really do. I mean, why don't we?
That's how I feel.
Why can't we jump in on it? And if it doesn't, if we find out that it's way above our, you know.
So we, we agreed to get back, I, I agreed to get back with him on May 9th, once we have an idea as to where we're at, and.
So.
So what we, if you don't mind, so we have a meeting on May 2nd, so if we can get a copy of that contract to present to the school committee on May 2nd, so we can have a review of it, just make sure that we're not committing to anything more than that, I don't feel financially the $6,900 is going to break the bank, so to speak, because of the, the value added.
Right.
You know, on the other side of it, so I'm fine with that. I just, I'm just very concerned about, just to make sure with, with regard to the language that.
Sure.
Millbury has money. Millbury would be the great town to be the third town, and then we can, you know, progress. And then a week later, we would know about the override as well. So May 2nd, maybe we can talk about that.
I think additionally, though, as, as another piece, because of the financial climate in the town, perhaps we invite the town administrator to the meeting next week, perhaps we invite a member of the board of selectmen, so that it's, it's a collaborative decision. We're using, you know, we're, we're trying to think outside the box, and while I understand that the decision would lay with this board, I think keeping them in that conversation is really important, so that they can see how we're trying to move forward, and, you know, whether, you know, if, if anybody agrees or disagrees, I'd like to hear what you think about it. But I, I don't know, I, I feel like, you know, we've made, we make a lot of decisions, but this one, because it's a town building that's involved, it's more than just here.
And it could be an assessment of the town as well. We still don't have the information with regard to, because I'm not sure, I haven't really gotten any information, I haven't seen really anything yet myself. So, and I've never met the gentleman, so I don't know, there's, and actually, I just started looking into it, there's, the Mass General laws are extremely specific about what qualifies as a Chapter 74 school.
Okay.
So we would want to make sure with regard to that aspect, and I do agree with you, Cherry, with regard to the fact that because of that Chapter 74, or is it a quasi situation that might act differently, like a school choice type of thing? We don't know the financing, and of course, as we know, regardless, any type of financing, whether it be a school choice assessment, or a vocational assessment, will go to the town, and it will affect them, you know, so.
So I think to all those points, what you said is a good idea.
Okay.
And so the other piece of it was that, in, in talking with him, this is what he does. He's a lawyer, and, and he, he works with, in, in the education field. He has done three schools already, within, three programs within the state, but he hasn't done one in quite a number of years. So he, he started doing this many, many years ago.
Okay.
Got away from it, got into real lawyering, and, and now, as he's getting close to his retirement and so forth, this is something that he wanted to get back.
Where were the other ones again?
Uh, one was in, one was in, he, he told me today, no, the guy that he talked to was from Chelmsford, it wasn't Chelmsford, I, I can't remember, Brett, he told me the two schools, the, the locations. One was out in Western Mass.
Yeah.
So we'll get them, so that at least we know.
But we'll get all that information. But this is something that, that he's, that he's done. I told him that I don't, I don't know the inside of that building, I've never been inside the gram, the grammar school. And, and he would obviously, there would be contention upon him being able to go in, and that's why he needs a commitment, because if he's going to go in and do an assessment of the building, he wants to know that we're in. So he wouldn't go in and do that until we, and I would make the arrangements with the board of selectmen and the, and the town administrators to meet with him to, to go ahead and do that. But, but the point I was going to, I was going to make was, when the gentleman got up last night and was, was asking about that, about that, you know, that's not really our niche, and maybe, I think that it, I think it has to become that niche, because I think, Brett, as you articulated it, it's not our niche, but in that it's not our niche, it's costing us a good sum of money.
Right.
Because of the numbers of students that are going to BBT, Norfolk, and, and so forth, and choicing out. So the, the hope would be that this would be the alternative that they're looking for, and also provide for the kid who does not get in, and opts not to go to BBT.
Key point, key point.
That they can still access those programs here in, in our own district, in a collaborative learning environment.
In their community.
Right. And, and what I was most concerned about was, there was two questions that I asked him, which was, the students who are presently enrolled at, say, Norfolk Aggie, and he did not have an answer to this, are they grandfathered? In other words, are those students who are presently attending able to matriculate through their senior year and graduate from there? Or do, if we have the program, do they have to come back to us? Which he does not know the real answer.
Because BBT, you could come back here.
So, but either, either way.
Do they have to?
But do they have to?
That's okay, that's okay, yeah.
In other words, so the reason why kids go to Norfolk Aggie is because we don't have, BBT doesn't have the program, we don't have the program, but now we do have the program, do they have to transition back? Which I don't think necessarily is, is the greatest of ideas. I'm not, I'm not a huge proponent of it, if they're comfortable.
Because they might not have the same offering.
But they'd have to make a decision, do I want to ride in the bus for 55 minutes, which Brett mentioned last night? And, and, or do they, do they not want a ride for 55 minutes?
I, um, and it doesn't.
It was open session.
Which means it's open season.
You couldn't take it back.
And it doesn't mean that necessarily the second that the collaborative opens, it's going to be as comprehensive as Norfolk Aggie. So it doesn't mean that they're going to automatically have every program.
Good point.
And my point to the gentleman was that, I, I don't think we have to be 100% of what Norfolk Aggie is.
No.
In order to keep people here.
Right.
I think, you know, you can be 75% of it.
Right.
And all it takes is one student to say, nah, I'd rather just stay here. That probably pays for the whole program. So expensive to go there.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
We've, we've explored, we've done, we've done our due diligence up to now, and he knew, and, and he's, he's understanding that we are in some financial straits, and he, he knows that I don't want to make a commitment to something that we cannot sustain.
Yeah.
And, and that's what we've been saying all along, and I think the, the board is in the same boat. I, I don't want to bring on, as I said last night, an adjustment counselor, and then next year, cut the adjustment council.
But I, I would say, override, no override, it feels like the $6,900 is a good investment to hold our place in that program.
Right.
Until we can figure out.
And worst-case scenario, we'll have a library that we can use.
If, depending on the contract.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, if it's only $6,900, it doesn't commit you to further it down the road.
And that's part of it, too, and that's part of why I think that bringing in the BOs and Matt, and even perhaps Ryan Hogan from Fincom, is a smart idea, because then we're all kind of making this, the decision at the same time. Like, this is an investment our town wants to make, and so it becomes our decision, not just this decision.
And it would be good for them to know about the building, too, that there is somebody interested in that building. What a wonderful use for that building, to go back to being part of a school.
I'm thinking, you come across, you take that turn, and you come up the hill, and it's, it's not a, it's not a boarded-up old grammar school, it's a, it's a college satellite campus.
A viable building, yeah.
But the other thing is, I would, I would suggest that I do want to go forward with it, but I need to get more information from him before we make the commitment, and I, I would want to be able to have, and I'm not, my point is, I'm not quite sure I'm going to have it all by next Wednesday from him.
Yeah.
And, and have read it, and have had, given, have given it to you with, with opportunity to read it. So that's my, that's my only concern, is the timing element. Because we're only, if it was two weeks away, I'd have no reservations, but we're meeting again next week.
Right. Now, is that date, Kevin, for the 9th, I believe you said? Is that to get the third district on board? Because that's probably going to be, you know, it could possibly be one of those other towns.
No, we would be the third. Anybody above that, above and beyond that, so it's, it's, it's Northbridge and Uxbridge that are in.
Yeah.
We would be the third. That, we're the difference maker. No, we would be the third. Anybody above that and above and beyond that. So it's Northbridge and Uxbridge that are in. We would be the third. We're the difference maker. He needs three districts.
No, but why can't, if he got Millbury, then we buy some more time. I'm saying as far as making the decisions.
Right, but right now, nobody else is ready to make the commitment. And actually, to be honest, we're a little bit further ahead than that.
What I worry about is if Millbury gets in, we're left out in the cold.
No, we're not. He indicated earlier, we could come on.
And he wants to get it to five or six.
I think the other thing to think about too is, Northbridge and Uxbridge are choice school towns. Millbury is not.
Right.
So, that's less appealing.
Right.
So let's see, we'll see, we'll get the contract language and.
Well, and that's the thing. So get, you know, see what you can get. I think it's still worth the conversation, even if it's, you know, even if it's limited. You know, at least to have the conversation to get us on board, if we can.
I'm glad to hear that. And we'll proceed and I'll keep the committee appraised of what's going on.
If he's eagerly waiting for a commitment, he'll step it up and have things ready for next Wednesday.
He's like that. He's a different sort. I don't know that I necessarily, he would probably have to come and present, but you'd have to be, sort of, be able to follow. The way he.
Oh, boy.
He's one of those. He kind of.
Yeah.
So, he's not straight to the point, is my point. Great guy, humorous is all heck, but. Tends to deviate.
Did you want to touch upon what you sent to Ryan and Joe?
Sure. I'm not going to read it out loud, because I do. I don't think I can do it justice. But coming out, so me and Sherri attended Day on the Hill today. We were only able to attend the morning sessions, and just the way the agenda worked out, that they really wouldn't be starting the part up at the State House, where you go see legislators until one-thirty. We both need to be on the road by one in order to get back, to get kids off of buses and whatnot. So, what I did instead is, when I got back, I sent off what started as a quick email and probably turned out to be a couple pages worth of. What Douglas, what I saw as Douglas's priorities with regards to education legislation that is either being considered or should be considered out there. And a lot of it was based off of the notes that are in this packet. I kind of picked the six that I liked the best out of there, that I thought most resonated with me. And actually, a couple that I thought. Not only did it resonate with me, I thought that would resonate very well with them. So I'll forward that email on to all of you. So I sent it off to Representative McKenna and Senator Fatman. It's just, you know, in lieu of us being able to meet face to face with them while we were there. So, and we'll follow up on it as well.
Well, I was happy that they were at our last meeting in the auditorium. And I was also pleased that some of the Thadman was aware of this program, because that we were talking about.
I don't know if it's his chief of staff or whoever was at the meeting last night.
Last night, right.
He's a part of that. I see him towards the end there, so I'm not sure if he's done that early.
He was there pretty much the entire time.
He was there for a long time. He hung in there.
Yeah.
Just that the key that I, within the email was, you know, I mentioned a couple times, you know, seeking to hear back from them on how they're supporting these priorities for us. To not to know that, yeah, I'm behind you on getting FPRC passed. Now, what are you doing to get FPRC passed? You know, what are you doing to get Circuit Breaker funded at fully at seventy-five percent? So, you know, that's the part that if we don't hear back soon, I'll be following up again with them to say, okay, what are we doing? So, that's the part.
Thank you. So, the accounts payable report?
Sure. So we had, we haven't had a ton of accounts payables really. Actually, you know, we just had more frequent meetings, so I don't have, you know, a ton of accounts payable to report on. So, back on April twelfth, we had fifteen batches worth fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. The bulk of that being general fund. And, gee, no, no circuit break at that time, so. Here is all the detail we'd like to go through. You have the summary in your packets, so.
Thank you. We have three, oh, actually, before we start with the minutes, I do want to say, Happy Administrative Assistance Day. We've got a lot of awesome assistants in the district. And without whom, I know a lot would fall apart. They run the schools. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise. They're the bosses. So, thank you to all the administrative assistants. Okay, so we have three sets of minutes. I know that there was a change in one. I don't remember, was it the April fourth? Courtney?
Oh, you're referring to the, both the March twenty-eighth and April fourth.
Okay, so in the March twenty-eighth and April fourth, if we could just change proposition two point five to actually reflect proposition two and a half. It's technicality.
Yes, that's really what it is, yeah.
So, there's that change. Did anybody see anything else? So we can do, we don't have to do them individually, you know, say.
And the April fourth meeting too as well.
Yep, April fourth and March twenty-eighth.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, and April fourth, two thousand eighteen, as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to the FY nineteen school physician, Dr. Elizabeth T. Soraco. This contract needs to be approved every year. Do you want to speak to that, Courtney?
Yep, I did check with her as I do every year, and she's fine with the same compensation that she's been getting for many years. And, you know, this is per Mass General law that needs to be voted on by the school committee. And we did update the contract itself last year. I did some work with this. I got. A bunch of samples from various school districts and got some really good ones. I also had the nurse leader take a look at it to see if there was anything she wanted to add into that. So we have actually reviewed the contract. I wanted to remind you of that as well. Last year too, to update it from what was there in previous years for a long, long time.
Does anyone have any questions?
So, just to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the FY two thousand nineteen school physician's contract with Dr. Elizabeth Soraco.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we've got the Douglas High School Student and Activity Advisor Stipend for Best Buddies.
Right, so we met on that, as you know, and we approved it, but what we forgot to do was approve the stipend that we had talked about. We talked about it, but we never voted to approve it. Which was the six hundred and seventy-seven dollar stipend for next year for the Best Buddies program. And so we would be looking to approve that stipend for the Best Buddies as student advisor.
Move to approve the establishment of the DHS Best Buddies Stipend in Appendix C of the Douglas Teachers Association Contract in the amount of six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. FY two thousand eighteen rate until a new Appendix C rate is agreed to.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Courtney?
If I could jump in just real quickly, because of the last statement, we did begin the meetings, as you know, the contract had been signed. One of the components of it was to review and revise the Appendix C. I just wanted to let the committee know that we did have our first meeting yesterday. Made a lot of progress. Courtney has given me some additional materials. We'll hope to come up with a final product and get it to you in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. So Courtney, for Business and Operations Managers' report, please.
Okay, I first have on the agenda, the FY two thousand eighteen transfers and reclassifications. I have before you the transfers. Which I forgot to put the number on it. Oh, boy, big trouble here. So, well, we have the date, so I'll add the number after. So. You know, I always have the transfer numbers. I keep track of it by numbers and date.
Are these both transfers? Are these two separate transfers?
No, I have first doing the transfers and then I'm going to do the reclassifications.
They both say transfer.
Ours both say transfers.
I have, did I give you like several copies or something? The first one is two pages of transfers. And then this one says reclassifications.
No, we don't have that. We only have transfers.
Oh, did I not give you the?
Did they make copies of both?
Copy.
We have the second page of the transfer twice. That's what it is.
Uh, I'm sorry?
We have the second page of the transfer twice. Well, we do not have the reclassifications.
Oh, sorry about that. Oh, boy.
We can pass it around.
Yeah, we can pass it around. Well, you know what? Because I have another, because I have two originals. So I'll put the reclasses down. Okay. Oh, that happened. Jeez. Sorry about that. So I have, do have two pages of transfers I hope you have in front of you. Like a page and a third. Okay, all right. All right. So basically, I'm updating, as you can see, many, many things. A lot of them I actually pre-did. We did, we have done all of the. Trying to think of the word now. Because it's a new contract. Hostile, cafeteria, and teachers. So we've gone back and done all the retros on those. So I've done, that's what a lot of this is here. And building maintenance, oh, we've gone over on a lot of the building maintenance. So I did have to find money, as they say, robbing Peter to pay Paul, to cover that.
Courtney?
That's a lot of the.
You said finding money?
If you just said that. I know.
You know how many times you have yelled at us?
She did use quotes. No such thing as finding money.
I did use quotes.
You always say, don't say that.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
Broke your own rule.
I did use quotes. I was trying to be funny, I guess.
As long as I go like this.
I don't know.
Wow, that's a shocker.
But I've never lived that down, even on TV. But I did follow up with Rob Peter to pay Paul, though. That's the more important part. And as I always say, Peter has long since left town. That's part of the problem. But anyway. So, and some of them are also requests from administrators, but most of it, by and large, are the retros. Taking care of those, so. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm looking for a motion to approve FY two thousand eighteen general fund budget transfers for the school committee meeting dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
So, moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Who said that?
Julie's.
I also have FY two thousand eighteen.
Really confused.
Which, oh my God, reclassifications, number eight. And these are all adjustments for grants. So just moving things around from general fund to grants. So that's it for that. Which we do all the time. Now, have you all had an opportunity to take a look at it?
Did anybody have any questions? Okay. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the FY two thousand eighteen reclassifications, number eight, for school committee meeting dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have an approval of internal control manual for federal grants.
So the story behind this is, we actually had an all-day Masbo conference where a gal, an attorney from the federal government from Washington DC came up. And I'll tell you, we all wish we had brought a case of Excedrin with us by the time the end of the day came. But they went over all of the new regulations, and one of the regulations is, you have to have an internal control manual that you have adopted. Actually, Jean and I were both, so what Masbo did was they created three, they created a committee, a subcommittee. So for three different types of school districts, kind of a smaller school district, a city school district, and then a regional, they all got together and they kind of created it. So this is really from a template that comes from Masbo. And they had it reviewed and all of that. So Jean and I started working on it to try to do it for both town and school, but that became just too problematic. So I told, you know, she can certainly use a template to tailor it more for the town, because it's, their grants are really different, although a lot of things will be the same. It just got to be, we tried doing it, we met a few times, and it's just. So I just figured I couldn't wait any longer, because we really should have done this last year, how she had it voted on, to be honest with you. So I didn't want to wait any longer to get it done. So I did send it out in advance. You'd have a chance to look at it. It's a lot of stuff, minutia stuff. Basically, we all, we already know, already following grant guidelines that are on the state website, DESE, they already have a grants manual and things of that nature, but the federal government wanted to get more involved throughout the United States.
So we don't just have the state now, now we have the federal government. Great.
And it was always the federal government involved, but they decided to send somebody from Washington DC, you know, to come up to every single state and go and scare the bejeans. In fact, I still have the slide that I shared with Jean. Where, when she was giving the training, she was a nice lady, actually. She was a very nice lady. I don't want to get it. But one of the slides actually had a picture of a policeman handcuffing a business manager. Follow the rules. So I thought, I thought that was a little bit much.
She's like, okay, I will pay attention, I promise.
So is this the exact template they approved, or you guys made alterations to it?
We made very small alterations, like munis, we have munis, and Jean and I, there are a few things that we wanted to add in, you know, for a little bit more, you know how Jean and I are. You know, things of that nature. Like, you know, Douglas Bogusouz utilizes Tyler Technologies' munis system and a couple of other things, like the thirty-five hundred dollar micro purchasing on page twenty-two. That, I didn't even realize. That is a special procurement thing from the federal government that supersedes. Chapter thirty-B from the state government. So that is one thing that I learned that actually, nobody in that room knew that.
Only you would pick that up, because I don't think we would have.
Anyway. But as I said, ninety-nine percent of this has been there. That's the one thing that I did learn that I did not know. Has been there all along, that you have to follow anyway. But they had to have it in writing, so they decided to keep it more of a template, standardize it throughout the state, because actually, this is going on throughout the entire United States, so.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for doing this on our behalf.
So, we're looking for a motion to approve the Internal Control Manual for Federal Grants.
Oh, is that, this is part of consent?
Oh, yes.
Prove a lot of it, okay.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Who seconded it?
Julie. Julie.
Which.
Mulder.
Oh, okay.
So, this evening, we do need to have executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. We're in open meeting, would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body and to conduct collective bargaining. So, we need to do a roll call vote, please, to go into executive session. We will only come out of executive session to adjourn the meeting. We will have no further discussion of anything else.
Julie Finnegan, aye. Julie Mulder, aye.
Agal, aye.
Julie, can you hear, aye?
Sherri Zetlin, aye.